Good evening and welcome to December to City Council Meeting of April 23, 2013. I'd like to thank the garden club for the arrangement.
Yes.
See you. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ibarra.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Here.
Mayor Rui.
Here. John Alita, would you give us some pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple. The American Cancer Society's Relay for Life will be held on this Saturday, April 27, 2013, at Cappuccino High School in San Bruno, beginning at 10:00 a.m. Ken, did you want to say something about that?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been privileged to be the event chair for this event. Our fourth year in San Bruno, and needless to say, the 15-member committee is very anxious that Relay for Life is this Saturday. We've been working at this for eight months. This is not just a fundraiser. This is a community awareness, brings the community together, and I am so proud that this community has come together, and it's something that we look forward to doing every year. We are very, I'm very pleased to say that we will more than likely reach our goal, $40,000 earned in San Bruno. We anticipate possibly exceeding that to $50,000 this year, $30,000 last year. We're anticipating over 200 participants at Cappuccino High School. 24 hours is a long time, and maybe 100 of those, half those people will stay overnight. But the message is that cancer does not rest. So 24 hours is an endurance, and it just gives you that brief moment of what a cancer patient, a person with cancer experiences. So we're dealing with entertainment, food, activities, but the main focus is awareness with cancer, that we are going to make a difference. We are funding some very important programs. We are part of a, the largest nonprofit event in the world. There'll be 5,000 relays this year, and there'll be 4 million participants this year, and we're part of that. And so I'm just very pleased that the community has come together. We've grown in this last eight months, and we're really looking forward to it. Thank you to the mayor, thank you to staff, thank you to all parts of this community, business and residences and schools for their participation. And so, come on out. Let me just give my relayforlife.org/SanBrunoCA. You can find out all about it. See you out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Ari.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everyone that Operation Clean Sweep takes place the first Saturday of May, so it'll be May 4th this year at 9:00 a.m. at City Park. So if you come, we'll give you donuts, and actually, we have Mr. Wayne Park here who every year donates the, donates the donuts for us and pays for them from San Bruno Auto, so we thank him in advance. And we have coffee from Starbucks, and we will equip you with a safety vest and garbage bags and gloves and pickers and send you out to pick up garbage and recycling items. Some people volunteer to paint the green garbage cans that are on San Mateo Avenue and to paint other structures in the city, put out woodchips in various places and do a variety of other things for our community. Yesterday was Earth Day, and part of the whole San Mateo County Celebration for Earth Day, which Operation Clean Sweep is also about, was banning plastic bags. And so if you come and participate in Operation Clean Sweep, we will give you a bag like this. It's called a Chico Bag because they fold up nice and neat like this, and they have a little latch on it, so you can put it on your belt. And I'd like to give these to each of you to remind, remember that you should come. Do I have any, what? Actually, yes, we do. I just brought green so nobody would fight about it. So that's what we do. It says, "Be a love bug, not a litter bug." And this is put on by City of San Bruno, San Bruno Beautification Task Force, and Recology. So we hope to see you there.
Good. And for those that are interested in these little bags, there's a box of them right there by the, by the table on the way out, so please help yourself.
Ah, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Item number four, presentations. Aren't any presentations this evening. Review the agenda. Item five, no objection, I'd like to move item 11, which is the annual report for community preparedness to write after public hearings. Item number six, approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of April 9, 2013, the errors corrections emissions. Seeing none, they'll be approved as submitted. Item number seven, the consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless recussed by a council member, citizen, or staff.
Move to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Motion is second. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings, item eight. We don't have a public hearing this evening. We're going to move right to item 11, which is the annual report from the Community Preparedness Committee.
I'm Deana Gunning. I'm the Chair of the Community Preparedness Committee, and it's a pleasure, Mayor Rui and council members, to bring you our annual Community Preparedness Committee annual report this evening. Our mission statement, the San Bruno Community Preparedness Committee promotes emergency preparedness, planning, and education to prepare residents to mitigate the potential consequences of natural and human-made disasters. Our members this year, myself as Chair, George Paponas, our Vice Chair is here this evening, Stephen Johnson, Ron Lepitas, Mike Ward, our other members, our city department staff, Dave Downing, our Deputy Fire Chief, Neil Telford, our Police Chief, Jim Allen, our Fire Marshal, and Tim Mahon, our Staff Liaison for Police Department, our ex-officio members, Brian Mulver, from our Office of Emergency Services, District Coordinator, and Walt Long, our San Bruno Amateur Radio Volunteer Liaison. For 2012, we're quite proud, once again, we've had a number of accomplishments this last year. We held the first annual San Bruno Preparedness Day, which we hosted at the San Bruno Resource and Recovery Center. We staffed information booths at city and county events, continued support of San Bruno CERT program, our Community Emergency Response Team Training Program. Our San Bruno amateur radio volunteers participated in county drills and updated emergency preparedness messages for San Bruno Cable TV in English and Spanish, so they continue to run in bilingual. These are some pictures of our first annual San Bruno Disaster Preparedness Day. We had a great turnout. We had several participants that included the American Red Cross, USGS, United Policy Holders, LOES, NICE PACs, and as you can see in the photos, we had OES there to sign up people for SMC Alert, and Congresswoman Jackie Speer also attended. This was our San Bruno Senior Center Preparedness Day, that was the first event that we held here at the Senior Center as well, where we gave out over 100 flashlights to the senior citizens and information on preparedness. They loved it. We had a great time, and it was fun watching them dance while we were also giving them information on preparedness. So that was, that made it a little interesting in trying to talk over the music, but it was a lot of fun, and they really appreciated it. We also attended last year, the first time, the Skyline College Health Fair, where we got quite a few members of our community and the college community to sign up for the Community Emergency Response Team Training, which we actually hosted this last session, spring session, at the college. Wonderful venue for the event, and we held the exercise two weekends ago, and it was a wonderful venue, and we're looking forward to doing that again in the fall. San Mateo County Disaster Preparedness Day, last year was June 9. We distributed preparedness literature, also registered members of the community for the CERT training, displayed CERT training videos, and also did radio transmission demonstrations with the amateur radio club. So these are just some photos from Disaster Preparedness Day at the county fair, and we, as always, each year have provided the gym mats for the kids and have trained the children in drop cover and hold and stop, drop, and roll drills. And they get a kick out of that. They have a lot of fun, and they're learning what to do in case of an earthquake or in case of a fire. The CERT training, the different courses that are offered, disaster awareness and preparedness, basic disaster skills, disaster medical, light search and rescue, disaster psychology and terrorism, team communications, organization and management with the Incident Command System, and then the final exercise, which is the skills development and application hands-on exercise. This was our spring class of 2012, and these are just a couple of photos of the light search and rescue station that we do and fire suppression. And this is the fall class. And Community Preparedness Committee support for San Bruno amateur radio volunteers. We were convening our meetings at the San Bruno Resource and Recovery Center. We have moved back to the Emergency Operations Center in the communications room where we actually hold the weekly net, which is on Monday nights. The meeting itself is the first Monday every month at 6:30, and we provide the communications net to the community at 7:30 p.m. So we increased our attendance again, and we participated in the county exercises, the Silver Dragon Exercise, Golden Guardian, and this last year, we also provided radio communications for the Labor Day Spirit Run Event, which actually is held in Burlingame. They had their first annual event last year. So this was a picture of that event. Again, myself, Ron Lepitas, Mike Ward, Walt Long, and Jim Allen, we're all part of the Community Preparedness Committee, and we are all part of the San Bruno Amateur Radio Volunteers Our 2013 goals, continue to promote community preparedness at CERT and city and county events. The Skyline College Health Fair, we actually did that on March 20th again. We are looking forward to participating in the Posey Parade this year. Again, San Mateo County Preparedness Day, which this year will be held on Saturday, June 8. Again, it's being held on the first day of the county fair, which seems to increase attendance, and we are getting a lot more people that sign up for the CERT trainings through that event. We're looking forward to doing the San Bruno Preparedness Day at the Senior Center again. We're yet to decide that date. And do some outreach, community outreach at Farmer's Market this year. And looking forward to holding the second annual San Bruno Preparedness Day, looking, hopefully, September is Emergency Preparedness Month, so looking to do that possibly the first weekend, and holding the venue this year in the park. So we're looking forward to that. CERT outreach to neighborhood watch groups. We continue to encourage our neighborhood watch groups to participate in CERT programs, promote use of SMC Alert, and publish a San Bruno SMC Alert brochure. Update and add community preparedness and CERT pages to the city website. We did promote CERT training on this last session on the city website, and we did get a few more attendees from that, so we're looking forward to expanding that. Explore use of social media to conduct community outreach to residents pertaining to preparedness. Preparedness Communications Pilot Program to San Bruno schools. The committee has identified schools within San Bruno to start a pilot project to get, raise awareness and get some of the events out. The Junior High School, Parkside, some of the other private schools, St. Roberts, Church of the Highlands, all have really good communications network. What we found are the grammar schools are still using an old paper system, so we kind of want to look at different ways and better ways to communicate through the grammar school system, but looking to tap into some of the loops that are already in place for the junior high and high school. And video PSAs on San Bruno Cable TV. We're looking forward to doing some work with San Bruno Cable TV on putting forth video PSAs, particularly have some footage from CERT trainings, and looking at just basic preparedness messages rather than just text messages on the cable. We want to look at doing some video. This year's ninth annual San Mateo County Disaster Preparedness Day, again, Saturday, June 8, at the fairgrounds from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And as always, we encourage people to register for SMC Alert, and looking at the alert messages, emergency information, weather alerts, road closures, crime alerts, preparedness emails and information distribution. And currently, I think the number actually has grown over 2,500. I think it's more over 2,600 now for the San Bruno residents, because we do make it a homework assignment and requirement when you attend the CERT training. We want to make sure that everybody registers, so we know the number's a little bit higher, and I know the countywide number's a little bit higher, too. And for October, get ready to shake out. We have this year's shakeout event that will be October 17 at 10:17, so it's 10:17 at 10:17 a.m., and you can register at shakeout.org to participate in that event. Any questions?
Thank you, Deana. Any questions for Deana or her committee? Well, you've been pretty busy.
We have been.
It looks like it. It looks like you're going to get busy.
I think we're upwards of 125, and we have the article that'll be coming out in the focus on the CERT program with some more accurate statistics on how many people we've trained to date.
That's great. Well, to you and all of our commissions, boards, and committees, you're the lifeblood of this city, all the volunteer work you do behind the scenes, and sometimes you don't get recognized for it, but tonight you will. So thank you very, very much to you and your committee, and keep up the good work.
Do the Chair.
Arika?
Real quick, Deana already pointed this out about the CERT training. I stopped by the Skyline College and spoke to the class very briefly a couple of weekends ago, or a couple of Wednesdays ago, and it's just amazing, the folks that volunteered their time, of course, to come there to be prepared, to get trained, to try to make a difference, not only in the community but in their neighborhood. And it's just so reassuring to meet them and talk to them, and what brings them there to sit through several meetings, and then a Saturday, and then to get the certificate, the backpack, and to be added to the list. So this community continues to thrive when it comes to those that want to give back, those that care, and those that want to be prepared. And I think it's a huge contribution, and both, please, George, you take it back as well to the committee, that I'm always very proud and pleased for what you've established and started with the CERT program here in this community.
Thank you very much. Item number nine, public comment, and item's not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council under public comment? All right. Item number 10, conduct. Oh, sure, thank you. Just tell us your name and your street, please. Thank you.
My name is Keith. My name is Keith Young. I live at 51 Linden, right around the corner here. I actually have three brief comments to make. I'm part of an informal neighborhood watch on Linden Avenue, primarily because most of my, most of my neighbors are, English is their second language, and I speak enough Spanish to help them compose letters and do different other things. So one of them came to me yesterday with some information around some potential violence that was going to happen on the, on the block. So what we ended up doing, we contacted the department, the police department acted quickly, things were taken care of, they had, and actually, the primary reason for my comments is to, are to acknowledge the officers that were there. There were, I don't know, his, he went by TJ, big officer. He stayed there. He was at the location for at least, I'm going to say, two hours, two, maybe three hours. There was another big cruiser that came by, another officer, short hair. The presence was, was strong, and it was needed, because the information we got said that there were six individuals who had potentially had firearms and were going to visit violence on that portion of the community. So we had the, we spoke to the sergeant, the evening sergeant, he contacted his beat officer, and then things were taken care of. I've left you, super, Councilman Medina, letters that some of my neighbors asked me to compose for them, because this is a matter that, well, I think the letters will speak for themselves, but I think this is a matter that requires some additional attention, because what we've got, I'll give you, I'll just give you one example. After this incident last night, I got a call at 10:30. One of the parents said, "Keith, my son needs to go to school tomorrow. I have to work early. Can you take him? I'm afraid to let him go by himself." And to me, that's unacceptable. That's just completely and totally unacceptable. I took the boy to school, and on the way, we talked about, you know, "How are you doing in school? He's a baseball player. How, how's your baseball team going? How's, how's all that going?" So then we get to, I'm a, I work for the county in workforce development, you know, finding, finding people jobs, helping people determine new careers. So quite naturally, I'm going to ask this young man, "What do you want to do when you grow up?" He said, "Mr. Young, I want to be a police officer." And I said, "Why?" He said, "Well, from what has been happening on, on our block, I don't want to see that happen to other children." This young man is 12. He has two six-year-old twin sisters. They live right across the street from me, so I'm the neighborhood dad. So I, as I'm leaving to work, you know, they're in the window, "Mr. Young, Mr. Young." But they never come out. They stay in the house all the time, because the parents are afraid to let them out. So again, that's why we have this informal neighborhood watch, myself and a few other folks. We've decided that when we see these activities that are, that are unacceptable, we're going to call the police, and we have. You know, we have, and I stopped in today and spoke to this young lady. She said, "Are you Keith Young?" And I was like, "Hmm, I don't know if that could be good or bad." But I said, "Yes, I am Keith Young." But, but I'm, I'm actually speaking, and Councilmember Medina, when you see the letters and you read them, you know, I ask that you share them with the group, because I think this is something that, you know, we've got kids involved here, we've got children, and you know, my daughter's, she's an adult, she's 23 years old. But I'll, I'll end with this one thing. There was an incident that happened a few weeks ago, when my daughter was coming home from Skyline College, where a group of adult males or older males, they know she's my daughter. They know who I am. They know, they won't, you know, they, we have an understanding. They don't, they don't come to me. What they did to her, they started calling her names, flashing gang signs. She called me on the phone, she said, "Dad, I'm almost home." I said, "Honey, run home. I'll call the police. I'll get there." So I called the police en route. Once I knew she was safe, then the officers came out. But this is basically to bring attention to this for, you know, for yourselves. I've spoken to the chief, the department has been responsive, but I think where we stand now is this, it needs to go further. You know, these, these people need to, as you'll see in the letter, there are at least three families who, they don't, they don't come out, and they don't let their children out. And, and I, again, that's just unacceptable to me. So you are, I guess you lead the Citizens Crime Prevention Commission or Committee or whatever it is.
The Chairman's right there. I'm delays.
Whoever does, I will be involved, and a number of my neighbors will want to be involved, too, because as I said, this is completely and totally unacceptable. So I thank you for your time.
And Mr. Young, thank you for your comments. When I do receive the letters, I will share them with my colleagues and to staff.
It's in your box.
Okay.
I dropped it off at City Hall today.
Then I will go after this meeting, on my way home, and I will pick them up tonight and read them.
And what I would really like, there are two things I'd like to, I'd like to have as a takeaway. Some of the folks, it would be nice for some of these folks to hear, and I'm sure, I haven't, I've had contact with, with the chief and with other officers, but given the fact that this young man, this 12-year-old, has law enforcement as a, as an interest, I think it would be a wonderful thing for him to, to meet and interact with one of the officers in it. If I could say, and let me, let me, I want to, I want to recognize all the officers. There's Officer Rogie, there's a big officer, Kent, I don't know his last name, it's TJ that I talked about. There's a young lady, her hair's pulled back, I don't, you know, and I don't, I don't know her name. Who else? There are about five of them, always, always responsive, always clearly understand the, this situation that these parents face. So again, took my, someone meeting with a 12-year-old was the first, first part, and then the second part is just some, if it's a committee or someone, just reaching out to the folks to let them know that, that they're heard, because they can't, they don't, English is their second language. So as I'm composing the letter, they're, they were asking me, "Well, Mr. Young, do you think, is this going to make a difference? Does it, does it really matter?" And I said, "Yes, you know, you, you need to do this. You need to do this." So again, thanks for your time, and I have the applica, I have the application. I can get it back to you in a day or so, and I will probably recruit some of my, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Anyone else under public comment? Okay. Item number 10, conduct of business. Our first item is adopt a resolution approving the Culture and Arts Commission recommendation for a centennial art project, concept, and site.
Good evening, Mayor Rui, members of the City Council. I'm John Alita. I'm the Assistant Library Services Director, and I serve as a staff to the Culture and Arts Commission. I'm here this evening to present a recommendation to you from the Culture and Arts Commission for a centennial art project, concept, and a site. I am joined tonight by the Chair of the Commission, Melody Tobin, and Commissioner Tammy Parker. At the close of my report, the Chair will elaborate a little further on, on the idea for, for the concept and site. This item goes back to July 2012. The Commission presented their annual report to you. At that time, they also indicated their interest and their intent to develop a concept and recommend a site for a centennial art project to commemorate the city's 100-year anniversary, which falls next December 2014. The Commission left that meeting and went back to their regularly scheduled meetings to develop this further. They quickly decided on a, on a concept of something that would be a two-dimensional mural or similar piece of work, and they were interested in something that would depict periods of San Bruno history, because it was a fitting topic to commemorate the centennial. Once they settled on that concept, they began to look at various sites within the city. They had already developed a list of sites over their years as a commission, and they took that list, and in addition to that list, they also reviewed some locations that felt fall within the transit corridors plan area. They looked at the sites for a few criteria. First, they wanted to find a site that would suit the concept that they had of a mural depicting some periods of history, the city's history. They also wanted to find a site that had a visual impact where either motorists or pedestrians or both would see the work and have it be, have some exposure. They also looked at locations relative to where other public art was placed in the city, and finally, they looked at the ownership of the, the potential properties to see if it was city property or not. The Commission, after that process, did settle on three locations that they felt were kind of finalist sites. That was, those were the one or more of the retaining walls that are located along Sneath Lane between roughly Clermont Drive and Quell Point Circle and the upper entrance to Clermont Drive. The other two sites that they looked at were the location of the new Posey Park at Huntington and San Mateo Avenue, and also at, excuse me, the intersection of Huntington and Herman Street under the Interstate, Interstate 380. The Commissioners are recommending the site along Sneath Lane for, for the following reasons. First, they felt that the length and the spacing of the multiple walls along Sneath lent itself best to their, to their idea concept. Sneath also provides high visibility in terms of traffic coming between 280 Skyline and El Camino. They also were aware that there are They also, uh, were aware that there are no city-commissioned public art projects on the west side of two, of, of two eighty in the city. A lot of the art is concentrated towards, uh, El Camino. And then, um, since this site is on city property, it, uh, is easier to work with in terms of, um, permitting, et cetera. And the other two alternative sites, they had some concern that either, uh, having to work, possibly work with other agencies might not ensure the project would be delivered by the, uh, anniversary date, by the centennial date. The, if, if you're, uh, if you approve the recommendation, uh, this evening of the site and the general concept, then the Commission would return within two to three months and bring a draft request for qualifications, uh, draft agreement to you for approval. What that would do would allow them to, um, go out, advertise locally and nationally for, uh, artists who have experience and who have a body of work that they can then look at to help them choose, um, the, the type of person they'd like to work with. They'd then, um, after that RFQ, uh, was finished and the artist was recommended, they would then work more closely with the artist to develop a final visual concept that they would then bring back to you before any of the work begins. Once that's done, the artist would then go to the studio, um, produce the work and then have it, uh, completed, uh, on or be, before the anniversary date so it could be installed in time for the, uh, centennial. There's no immediate fiscal impact to your approving the recommendation, uh, of the site location and concept, however, um, the Commission will need to develop a budget along with the artist when they do this project. And as they do that, they will, uh, take into consideration the amount of, of the balance in the city art fund as it relates to the cost of the project and any other future projects that they would, uh, like to, like to do. Uh, at this point, um, I'd like to turn it over to the Chair for, uh, some more in-depth detail for, about their concept.
Um, our concept for the public art, um, as John said, was to depict some of the history of San Bruno, going back to the days when that area was Sneeath Dairy and really focusing on the history of San Bruno on the west side. So one of the things we really want to show is the natural habitat, maybe the, um, Mission Blue Butterfly, the California Poppies, the artichokes and, um, just some nice, simple visuals that will not be too distracting to traffic, but that will enhance the area. Um, as you know, that wall sometimes winds up being a canvas for graffiti. So of course, one of the things we're looking at is graffiti-proof paint. Are there any questions?
Would these have to be, would these be, you're talking about something that's painted directly on the concrete or would it be a two-dimensional piece that would be hung?
We've looked at different applications and because the roadway is so narrow and the traffic is high-density traffic area, we would probably have the artist produce it on another, um, form that would be mounted to the retaining walls.
Okay, so it would be done off-site?
It would be done off-site and then it would be installed in the, the wee hours of the morning when it would not impact traffic. Um, one of the things we've also discussed in our, uh, broad plan is maybe landscaping the area behind it, um, to ensure that the, um, ivy doesn't grow over and obscure the, the murals.
Any other questions, Ken?
Melody, you, you, you mentioned, you know, as far as not being distracting and that was the first thing that came to my mind is I, I wanted to know what, how the committee discussed driving up because it's, you know, it's windy and, you know, all of a sudden you get, you know, at least for the first couple of times, you'll, you'll notice something and you might just unconsciously slow down, so.
Um, if I may approach the bench. I'm not one of those powerfully girls, but I.
I feel, I feel like a judge.
Some of the photos that I brought for you are murals in other communities in California specifically that are on high visible traffic corridors. There's a wall in Aptos that is right on the frontage road of Highway One. There are, um, some, one of the projects that we'd like to see down the road are the signal power boxes and all through the Santa Cruz community, uh, they, they paint and decorate those in amazing, um, murals. So what our concept is for the entire four walls is for the murals to fade in, depict something and fade out. So you're not busy swerving to look at one specific thing, but hopefully each time you drive through that area, you'll notice something else. You might not notice the poppies the first time. You might not notice the butterflies. You might not realize, oh, these cows mean there was a dairy there. Or I didn't realize that we had artichokes in San Bruno. Things like that. Uh, we, we understand, um, traffic-related issues. The last thing we want to do is create, uh, problems. And so we think other communities have done it successfully and that we can emulate that.
Thank you.
I kind of had some of the same thoughts as well. I was just up there not too long ago going, because you do go by fast and then it would, I mean, it'd be like, oh, oh, look at that. And then you do slow, it would be an automatic. So I guess in short, has the Police Department reviewed this, um, this concept and they think as a traffic concern that that's not one of them?
We have not reviewed it with the Police Department, but that's a good stopping point. We certainly will. Um, one of the things that we have batted this around for years is, um, and something that we would say to combat, you know, distraction is there's nothing more distracting than graffiti. At least over time, um, hopefully, and it's been shown in studies that once you have public art, there is less graffiti, that it won't be a distraction and it'll be just something that you can enjoy as you go up or down Sneeath.
And I think you're right about graffiti versus, you know, if you, if you, I mean, the, the couple of arts that we had over by, uh, the Great Separation as well as over on San Mateo Avenue, uh, they haven't been touched, so we've been blessed that way. The other thing is, is that, uh, you mentioned about some of the landscaping above it, which I'd agree because the vegetation grows over, then that obviously defeats the purpose. But also is there, uh, what type of a cost that will be as an ongoing maintenance issue since obviously, uh, there are many in the community that are looking for areas that need improvement. Um, and then taking on another one, I just worry about overall continuing to keep the image that the community wishes.
Staff has brought that up. And we would certainly use some, um, low-maintenance, drought-tolerant vegetation that we would work with staff on their recommendations. We're not talking about elaborate landscape. Um, poppies, something that would enhance the area, grow naturally and not take maintenance. Uh, other than, you know, the ivy or the ice plant, whatever's there right now that's growing down the walls is something we certainly want to eliminate.
I noticed, uh, a lot of the examples that you, you gave us in the handout are of, uh, pillars, freeway pillars in San Francisco. And was any thought given to, would those pillars a little further down under I two eighty where San Bruno Avenue or, you know, uh, some of the other streets intersect? Or was that one of those, uh, issues where you had to work with another government agency, which could probably take a lot longer?
That pillar is very unique and I printed out the story behind it as well. That is the very first pillar in California that was done on a freeway. Um, it had to be done cooperatively with Caltrans and a number of government agencies. We want to do something that we can show successfully, that we've completed, uh, before we try and take on something like that. If we, and also because we do want to have it finished for the centennial, taking on a pillar at this point is probably not, um, feasible. But we have looked at number of sites under the freeways, under, um, two eighty on San Bruno Avenue, under, uh, three eighty over behind Tan Fran. We, we've looked at a number of those sites and they are on our map as future sites. And it's definitely something that we wanted to focus on as we've talked about, um, neighborhood art projects to, um, announce and reflect neighborhoods. That might be something we can do for neighborhood gateway projects.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Good to hear. Thank you. Um, so one, uh, one question I had. So, um, I, I drive through Hayward a lot in, in the course of my, uh, weekly commute and they've done something really nice with a, a timeline relating to Hayward and it goes back to the Alone Indians and shows a progression and that, so I agree with this concept overall. I think it's a really, a really good idea. Um, and these walls definitely lend themselves to that sort of, uh, um, of timeline artwork. But my concern would be that in this particular area, traffic tends to move rather quickly and people may not even notice that it's there. And just from my experience, I've noticed that thing because there's a stoplight that kind of forces me to stop there and so it's like, oh, hey, artwork. And so you look at it because you're stuck there, but if you're kind of racing past and, um, I, I think Sneeath is one of those areas where people are kind of zipping through and it's kind of a little bit secluded. Um, I'm just worried that nobody's going to notice it and, and I would, I would hate for us to have something there that had this much thought and, you know, it's, it's there, but maybe people aren't going to notice it. Doesn't really lend itself well to walking traffic where even, you know, if you wanted to do a walking tour of our public art, um, this is an area that's a little bit inaccessible. I was wondering if you guys had thought about that a little bit? I mean, I, I, I'm not against the idea. I, I can't think of another place in the city that has this sort of, uh, a canvas. So I know it's difficult, but, um, I mean, did you guys think at all about?
Oh, we have. We've, we've thought that through as well. Um, and one of the things that makes this unique is, um, A, you might not see it the first time. You might not see everything that's going on on the four walls the first time and each time you drive through the area, you might discover something different. Also have the, um, ability to go to that area because you've heard about these walls. I know at Christmas, we all hear about the neighborhoods that decorate and, um, we all go to, to those neighborhoods and, and check out their Christmas decorations. And I think this will be a nice destination drive as you're headed up to the college or you're exploring San Bruno. And it's like, hey, where are those walls I keep hearing about or I keep seeing in the paper or I see on the PSAs or, or, or whatever. But we, we definitely don't think that they will be ignored or missed. We think it'll give people a reason to drive up that area, maybe drive a little bit slower because they want to see what's going on instead of just speeding up or down Sneeath Lane. There are sidewalks on the opposite side, so I know parking is, is not something that you could easily do, but if we wanted to do a walking tour of it, we most certainly could walk down, um, the other side and hopefully it'll, it'll draw people there. But most importantly is we want people to slow down, take a minute and really see a little bit at a time. And, and hopefully that's what they'll do rather than speed by and swerve into oncoming traffic. It'll make people slow down and think about, wow, look at the, look at the progression of this and, and see how it flows and not to be distracting, but to be enjoyable and maybe take a time out and, um, take a deep breath and, and look at what's going on around you. And that's why we want it to be more environmental. Uh, we like the idea of a timeline. We don't want it to be distracting. We don't want it to be jump out and, you know, scare you, but something that blends and, um, hides the, the, the blight of those walls. And it is truly the biggest canvas we have in the city. And we don't have anything, as John said, we haven't focused on that side of the city yet. Um, the first time we really thought about that area for public art was after the explosion. Um, and we didn't want to highlight the explosion or even commemorate it, but we also don't want to forget about that area. So we need to bring them a little bit of sunshine as well. And hopefully this will accomplish everything we want it to and hopefully we'll be able to do it, um, in a reasonable cost.
Thank you.
Anything, Irene?
Well, I attended a couple of your meetings last year as the Council liaison to the Arts and Culture Commission and heard some of this discussion. And I, I think you did an excellent presentation and explained all the thought process. They have really, the Commission as a whole and especially Melody under their leadership as the Chair, or her leadership as the Chair, really thought through a lot of the issues here. Staff has helped them, um, flesh out the kinds of things that you've heard her talk about. We've all driven past things on the freeways. We've all looked at signs. We've looked at, um, you know, posters. We've looked at advertisements. We've looked at all those things and, and had to speed by them and, and nobody swerved over and crashed or did all those things. So I think the concept is excellent that you're, you're doing a gradual thing. You're not doing a, a single splash of something. You're doing a, a gentle kind of gradual thing that people can see a repeat of, of whatever, like the butterflies. You're not going to have one big butterfly. You're going to have, if I understand the concept right, several butterflies so people can gradually be aware of them and things like. So I think it's a, uh, an excellent idea. I think the canvas has long been neglected there and I think that that neighborhood has long been neglected and I think this would be a great centennial project. So having said all those things, I'd like to, is it a resolution? I'd like to introduce the resolution.
Can I ask a question on the resolution before we vote on it?
Yeah.
So, um, I, I noticed that the resolution doesn't include any language around, uh, commitment of funds and so I'm wondering what the extent of the resolution is. So is this just approval of the concept and then we'll come back with a, a cost estimate?
Yes, we, we want you on board. We, we didn't want to come back and say, we picked an artist, here's our budget and then you're like, huh, no, not that wall. We plan to, you know, something else with that wall. So we are going to come back to you in our July yearly review and give you the full outline of what the plan is, how we're going to select and work with an artist and what our budget is. One of the things we need to explore that we haven't explored yet is exactly what the fiscal impact is going to be on getting out there, measuring the walls, talking to some local artists and seeing what is the cost to do something like this? Um, and does it make a difference if we're doing gradual in and out as opposed to filling four walls with, you know, high-impact? We also want to make sure that the, the paint that we're using is not only graffiti-proof but reflective so that it's doesn't, you know, people don't drive into it.
Okay.
But we, we will get to those figures in July. But this is really just to approve our concept.
All right.
That's okay. Okay, so I'm introducing the resolution.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Hi. Excuse me.
Councilmember Ebera?
Hi.
Councilmember Medina?
Hi.
Councilmember Salazar?
Hi.
Mayor Wayne?
Hi.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, just since, uh, some of the committees are, just on a side note, you know, the, we talked about just the artwork that used to be where the Great Separation's going.
Mm-hmm.
And I know, I'm hoping that was secured and stored during this, but, um, but I'm also wondering if it's not going to go back there if there's another spot in the community or during your agenda building, maybe that can be looked into.
It, it is the, it is our plan to go back there or to go to, to, to go back in that area. Um, we do, well, we did have a member on the Great Separation Committee, but it is safely stored and waiting for its location to come back.
Thank you. Item ten B, receive staff report and consider repeal of chapter four point four zero regarding massage establishments and revised massage establishment ordinance. and revised massage establishment ordinance.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. While we wait for Chief Telford and Lieutenant Caldwell to come up to the table, I'd like to thank the two of them for helping out with reviewing both the draft of this report, the draft of the ordinance, the PowerPoint presentation. And thanks also go to efforts by David Waltering, your Community Development Director, as well as Joanne Ryan in the Finance Department who processes many of the business license applications. So I'd like to take just a couple of minutes to bring you back to 2008. That was the year that, prior to which, cities could, in essence, fully regulate massage establishments. There were many legitimate massage practitioners and establishments. Unfortunately, there were also some that were engaged in illegitimate practices. And the ones who were not doing so were concerned and became concerned about regulations all over the state where each city could impose their own regulations and separate license fees, making it difficult and expensive for legitimate practitioners to practice their trade in different cities, both in the Bay Area and across the state. So what happened was in 2008, the legislature created something called the CAMTC. That's the California Massage Therapy Council. And it's a nonprofit public benefit corporation whose mission it was to provide uniform qualifications and regulations for, to license all of the massage practitioners and businesses in the state of California. Now, one interesting thing about this organization and its permitting system was that nobody was actually required to get a permit from the organization. It was purely voluntary. You could if you wanted to, but you didn't have to. But if you were certified by the CAMTC, then cities couldn't impose a regulatory license or a separate permit and they couldn't charge you a licensing fee greater than for other professionals. So even though the system was voluntary, as you saw in my staff report, I thought it was kind of interesting, over a three or four-year period since the CAMTC was adopted, we had over forty-five thousand applications for massage permits. So it became a popular thing to do. Partly in response to that, after CAMTC was passed, cities amended their ordinances to deal with the implications of the new law. Some cities wanted to ban establishments. They wanted to establish a moratorium so they could study the situation. There was a proliferation of massage establishments that cities didn't think was a good idea. What San Bruno did instead in 2009 was adopted what was at that point a best practices ordinance, which was a two-tier regulatory system. So in other words, if you were certified by the CAMTC, then you could practice massage in the city of San Bruno without significant additional regulatory constraints. But if you weren't certified under the CAMTC, you could still practice massage in the city, but you had to go through a background check and all kinds of other things. And that, at the time, was authorized under the state law as it existed. So what happened in 2011 is the state amended the ordinance to further constrain local regulation. Oh, now it worked. So what the state law said was that you can't adopt a moratorium. You can't ban massage establishments except in very limited circumstances when you're putting a moratorium on all other kinds of professional services like dentists and doctors and so on, lawyers and so on and so forth. The state law also said that if you're zoning in the city, you have to treat massage businesses in the same way as any other professional service. And so as a result of that, most of the local preemption, or most of the local regulation was, in essence, preempted or constrained by state law. So what happened after 2011 is the cities began amending the ordinances to conform with the law and they felt, as we do, that amendment of their local ordinance is important, not only to conform to state law, but also so that we can continue enforcing those things in our local ordinance that we're allowed to do still under state law. It's also an opportunity to revisit the two-tier system that the city had, which is allowing all massage therapists irrespective of whether they were CAMTC certified or not. So what we're proposing tonight is your review of an ordinance that requires a couple of things. First of all, that all massage practitioners have a CAMTC permit. And so even though nobody's making a massage practitioner go to the state agency and get a permit, our ordinance would say, if you want to practice massage in San Bruno, you have to have a CAMTC permit. That's the regulation. And in addition to that, all massage establishments, so if you have more than one practitioner doing massage in a particular place, every one of those people needs to be CAMTC certified. So once they are, then all of those individuals can obtain what's called a certificate of registration from the city and that's just a document that says, yes, we see that you are, we've done our review of your paperwork and you're okay. The ordinance would also require a yearly renewal. It would restrict hours of operation to what are normal business hours in most of those zoning districts. We also clarified the process to suspend or revoke those certificates of registration if there is a problem. Interestingly, the ordinance also allows a grace period to September to become CAMTC certified. So if you want to practice in San Bruno and you're not certified right now, you can become certified. You'll have a number of months to do that and we don't think that's going to be an issue for most people. The other thing about the ordinance is that it sunsets in 2016 and you might wonder, well, why is that? And the answer is because state law that created the CAMTC also sunsets in 2016 unless it's amended, repealed, or something. We don't know what's going to happen. So we want to make sure that whatever new ordinance we adopt is consistent with state law, both in terms of its content and in terms of its effect. So the real question is, what does all this mean? And it means a couple of things. It means that state law does continue to constrain our local measures to prevent or deter illicit activity that might be occurring at some of these institutions. The result is, and Neil and Jeff can talk about this further, that it's going to have to shift our focus in terms of enforcement from a proactive or from an upfront prevention deterrent standpoint to an after the fact, we get a complaint, we understand there's some illicit or criminal behavior potentially going on and then we have to do some enforcement about it. So the result of that is that we think there may be additional resources needed in the Police Department and we also think that our office may be involved in more civil enforcement through the court system if we can't get CAMTC to take action on individuals who we've determined are violating the law in some way. So we just have a couple of next steps. First of all, obviously for you to provide comments and tell us your thoughts about the proposed ordinance, if any. And then to come back to some of your subsequent meetings, introduce and adopt the new ordinance. But in the meantime, staff has already been working closely internally to implement what I would refer to as an enhanced and more coordinated review system, both for the new and existing practitioners and establishments. So we'll do whatever we can to make sure that both the current establishments are complying with the law and any new ones that may want to come in are also doing the same thing. So that concludes my staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mark? Ken?
Mr. Chair? What is the application process for the CAMTC? Is it just a paper and is there a test?
So it's a very, I would say, complex or potentially complex process. What the CAMTC requires is a certain number of hours from particular schools that are approved by the state in massage therapy. And the number of hours depends on a couple of different factors. The CAMTC then is supposed to do a background check and other investigations to make sure that the person is a legitimate massage practitioner. And then thereupon, they issue a license. What we have found unfortunately is just because somebody has a license doesn't necessarily mean that they're not going to engage in some criminal activity. And I've given you some examples of that in the staff report, which is what gives us pause to think that the CAMTC has either the resources or the wherewithal to properly investigate each and every one of these tens of thousands, literally, of licensees that are coming in. So that's the challenge that the city has, is to make sure that, in a way, that the CAMTC is doing their job.
So it's not a matter, it's not really a matter of whether you're a good masseuse or not. It's whether you're using it as a front.
That's correct.
Anything else?
To the chair.
Michael?
Is there any mechanism for recovering money from the state when they do something that creates hardship on our ability to protect our citizens?
Well, it's an interesting question. There is an entire body of state law called unfunded mandates and there's a process by which cities can, in theory, and I emphasize the words, "in theory," recover money for unfunded state mandates. I think the short answer to your question is not from a practical standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Just on Councilmember Salazar, because even the state regulates and sets most of the precedent on what the city can and cannot do. And in essence, we can't charge a different business license structure, therefore to recoup costs. And so really our hands are tied that the state has put forth its standards and, again, like you said, unfunded mandates.
They are. I mean, the only additional possibility is if there is civil litigation against a massage establishment under, for example, a state law called the Red Light Abatement Act. That's a statute under which the city can recover its costs and attorney's fees for doing so. But it's more difficult for the city to recover just the ongoing actual costs of monitoring and investigating these establishments to make sure that they are complying with state law.
Would you like to address the council?
Yes.
Yeah, step right to the microphone. Tell us your name and your street, please.
I'm Beverly May. I'm Director of Governmental Affairs for the California Massage Therapy Council. I actually live in Belmont and so I have no mark from there. I was thinking there was no three-minute timer, so I had a ton of notes, but I'll try and be as quick as possible. Unfortunately, I had spoken to Lieutenant Caldwell and sent him some sample ordinances a while ago, but I unfortunately didn't see this until today. So I just did a very quick review. I do have a few comments on it and comments just on the discussion in general. CAMTC doesn't endorse any ordinances, but we do have given out samples. I see that a lot of this has come from Redwood City Ordinance, which was drafted by your former city attorney, Pam Thompson. And what we've learned is that the concept of the revocable registration is actually a creative interpretation of the law. It's not in statute. There are some cities that have not put it in because they're very, they're concerned of a legal challenge, but a number, it is the trend, a number of cities are putting it in. We actually are trying to get that, we have gotten that legislation, that language into legislation this session, AB 1147. We're also trying to get a mandated exam into, that is in there and we're hoping that this bill will move forward. The revocable registration has been a very useful tool and Redwood City has just closed one or two longstanding establishments. I know the county has closed them, just using the revocable registration where they haven't had the resources for nuisance abatement, which is very time-consuming and expensive. And they've just been able to revoke under the lower standard of the revocable registration. I am concerned about some of the statements in the staff report. I don't deny them, but I'm, CAMTC takes very seriously illegitimate behavior in the profession. We do a very thorough background check. Lieutenant Caldwell probably gets emails all the time from people he doesn't know because we send an email blast to our contact in every city where an applicant has listed as home or work for the last 10 years. And many times we get information that is not on the DOJ report or FBI report. We can, our standards are civil standards, so we can, we have a lower standard to deny, revoke, or suspend and we do work very effectively. We're moving, increasing our professional standards division and our professional standards division is actually, the director spent 32 years with LAPD, 28 of those in vice. His whole division are ex-vice officers and attorneys, so he's got a very good and effective division. We, the, like your city, we can't deny somebody if their background, if their education holds up and their background is clean. And a lot of times, as you know, there are people who are prostitutes and we, they just haven't been caught yet, or sexual predators, which we get a lot of complaints of as well. We do have very effective means for denying, suspending, and revoking that have been enhanced this year with the passage of SB 1238. We, Lieutenant Caldwell is aware of our officer declarations. We can take a declaration even if charges haven't been filed or there's been a quid o. We can sometimes act based on the first-person report. One thing that your ordinance doesn't have, which is another tool that was in the SB 1238, is that it allows cities to prohibit a massage business from opening in the same location where one has been closed for criminal activity. And Huntington Beach was the first city to just enact that into an ordinance. That is a very important tool to help prevent the rotating door of closing a place down and a new owner takes it over or the brother-in-law. There, let's see, as far as the ordinance, as I said, I think it's mostly good. There's a few little things. One correction, the sunset date in the law hasn't been changed, well, the sunset date is, has been moved to January 1st, 2015. So we have already begun that process. That's the opportunity where our law gets reviewed. That's an opportunity to make changes either to CAMTC, how we operate, or to the law itself. And we expect to be asking for quite a bit more authority for us and to assist cities. In section four point, well, I don't know if you want me to go into sections or if you are not going to vote on a first reading today. I can certainly work with Mark on it.
So if I may, through the chair, it's wonderful to see Beverly again. We did work closely together on the Belmont Massage Ordinance and we can certainly get together after the meeting. It's not slated for introduction tonight. It's just open for a discussion. And we're, you know, very pleased to know that CAMTC is continuing to improve its efforts to work with cities and especially when cities come up with information that calls into question whether an applicant or a licensee from CAMTC should have their license suspended or revoked. That's the kind of cooperation that we're, that cities are really looking for. So I'm very, very pleased to hear that and will certainly work together with Beverly between now and the next meeting to incorporate some of those things that she talked about into the ordinance and make sure it's just as good as it can be.
Okay, is that all right with everybody?
Absolutely.
Okay, good idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there are no other questions, we'll...
Irene?
I just want to reemphasize the part about the revolving door and being able to prohibit that. I think that is extremely important.
Yes, thank you. That's a great suggestion. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Item 10C, receive quarterly financial update report as of March 31st, 2013, for the 2012-13 General Fund, Enterprise Fund, and Internal Service Funds operating budget.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm here this evening to present the third quarter financial update report. And I'd like to begin by starting with the general fund and just reviewing many of the trends that have been previously discussed with the prior mid-year financial update report. Starting with sales tax, we are continuing to see sales tax trending at about the 60% of budget for the, as of the third, end of the third quarter, which is on pace with where it was last year. However, the budget over last year was increased, so overall sales tax is increasing over where we were last year. Similarly with property tax, property tax, as you can see, is trending at 66% of budget this year, whereas it was at 62% of budget last year. Much of this is due in part to the loss of redevelopment and the city now receiving property tax as a result of that dissolution of those tax increment funds now becoming to the city as property tax. So that is the explanation for why property tax is really trending higher. We are starting to see assessed values pick up slightly, but it's still very slow moving. Another... Another notable revenue that I'd like to call to your attention is also hotel motel occupancy tax, or TOT, continuing to trend very strongly. We're at 75% of the budget as of the end of the third quarter. Do keep in mind that TOT tracks one month behind, so rather than it representing a nine month, we're actually representing eight months of the fiscal year because they tend to track one month after. So we are trending well in many of our revenues, and if you look at sales tax, property tax, and TOT as a whole, and compare it to where we were last year, you do see that revenues are high, they're, those three together are about $1 million higher than they were last year. So I say that because it's hard to explain why those look so good and why I'm not sitting here saying that things are fabulous, and the counter to that is really, again, I sound like a broken record of the loss of redevelopment, and I just keep reiterating that impact because the charges for services, these are allocations that we used to recover from the redevelopment agency, as well as our use of money in property. This is an interest payment that the city used to receive from the redevelopment agency on some outstanding loans and advances between the city and the agency. Those revenues are no longer being received, and so what we're seeing as an uptick in some of these other revenue categories is really offsetting the loss that we experienced from redevelopment last year. So we're, we're keeping pace, but it could be better had it not been for that. Going into the expenditures, and I apologize, the individual percentages for the departments are not calculating correctly, so the bottom line, 74% is accurate, and if you look at the handout that went in the packet, that is, that represents the actual percentages to date. So on the expenditure side, we're seeing that most department expenditures are trending within the 75% range, which is where we would expect them to see, expect to see them at this point in the year. One exception that we're noting is recreation has slightly higher expenditures at this point in the year. As compared to last year, they're at 85% of their budget, and much of that is due to some of the after-school programs and ACEs programs that the department is offering, and you will see, if you look at the revenue side, that those increase in expenditures is being offset by increased revenues as well. So that's some of the explanation for that recreation. Otherwise, across the board, we're seeing that expenditures are trending, tracking on budget for the general fund. On the enterprise funds, starting with the cable fund, we're continuing to see some decline, drop-off on cable revenues, and those revenues, while they're declining, we're also seeing a decrease on the expenditure side for cable. So overall, we're still seeing revenues over expenditures, a positive cash flow on an annual basis for the cable fund when looking at those numbers. On the wastewater fund, revenues are tracking where they should be, at about 75% of budget at this point in the year, and that budget for the year does take into account the rate increase that was approved back last summer. On the expenditure side, the 54%, it looks a little off, and the explanation for that is really just a timing delay. We pay quarterly payments to the city of South San Francisco for the wastewater treatment plant, and those payments are sizable in excess of $700,000. At this point last year, we had paid three. This year, we've only paid two of those, so the, the drop-off is one that we will make up just as time moves forward. On the water fund, we are seeing the revenues trending slightly above budget, 79%, and you, you know that this year has been a dry year, so I think we're seeing consumption slightly higher than what we would have anticipated, just as a result of the winter months being slightly drier than they have been. And on the expenditure side, again, trending as we expected at 75%. And finally, on stormwater, revenues at 65%, again, stormwater revenues are collected on the property tax bill, and we've received one installment, we'll receive the second this month, so it's not reflected there, so we do anticipate that those will meet the budget. And nothing notable on the expenditure sides, trending slightly below budget at this point in time. So that concludes my overview. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Kim? Rico?
To the chair. Just, you've kind of touched on them already, so thank you. I was wondering under the expenditure category, if we are, you know, at least for myself, I would appreciate, under the general administration, we have a lot of areas from the electeds and, and other departments as a collective. Can we have them itemized and broken down each department as far as where the expenditures are? And then on the cable, you've already touched bases on that, and maybe we can come back at the budget study session, as I had mentioned before, to have a kind of where we're at, the assets, the value, our plan for the future, because that is down somewhat, or not somewhat, it is down. So I'd like to have us keep an eye on that, and then you already mentioned about, again, beating me to the punch, the recreation, senior services, and parks, that that is higher, and I'd like to just have that evaluated too at the budget time.
Ken?
Ken, regardless of, you know, all those figures and everything, it just, it seemed like sales tax might have been, I guess the impression is that sales tax would be trending better. What's your opinion of that? It's a little better percentage point from last year. I would have thought that that would have been higher, you know, judging from the way everyone's saying, you know, things are, things are good.
So sales tax is trending higher. Keep in mind that the budget, we actually increased the budget this year at the, during the mid-year financial review, we increased the budget $150,000 to the 6.85, so that is an increase over what we originally budgeted, and they are tracking about, you know, 5% above budget at this point in time. So we are seeing an increase, and I think as compared to last year, I think because we started to see much of the uptick during the latter part of last fiscal year, comparatively, we're probably not seeing as much as maybe some cities that were the recovery started a little bit later are started slightly earlier, so I think that might be some of the explanation. But I would say overall, I think sales tax is still trending and going very strong.
Yeah. Good. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you very much, Ken. Item 10D, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Endpoint Technologies for purchase of Microsoft Office Suite 2013 in the amount of $37,395.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. For the past 13 years, City of San Bruno staff has used Office 2000 in the performance of their daily tasks, and that includes Word, Excel, and PowerPoint. And during this time span, Microsoft has introduced five upgrades to the Office Suite. They are Office XP, Office 2003, 2007, 2010, and now 2013, which was released late last year. With each new release, we encounter compatibility issues with our older and the newer versions of the documents, and it's causing inefficiencies with staff when they try to open the documents, when they try to edit the documents. We have taken some steps to alleviate this issue. We have installed converters on the network, but again, as the programs advance, the converters are becoming less and less effective, and at times, we lose the features of the newer documents, we lose formatting, and believe it or not, at times, we actually lose the data in the documents themselves in the conversion process. Also, support for Office 2000 ended many years ago, and we no longer receive the security updates from Microsoft. But keep in mind, this does not put us at a huge risk. We do have quite a few security measures and devices in place. We have our firewalls, we have our antivirus, anti-spamware software, we have intrusion detection system, but keep in mind that Microsoft updates, their updates for the Office products are designed specifically to target threats against Office products and Office documents. This upgrade will eliminate the, the difficulties when opening and working on documents for city staff, and it will also reduce some of the vulnerabilities our network might face from other security threats. One part of our evaluation process for this project was our training subcommittee, our training committee was granted access to the Office 2013 documents, Word, Excel, and PowerPoint, with the purpose of evaluating the training requirements for our city staff. And the committee recommends, or the committee strongly recommends, that all staff attend some type of training or some level of training for the Office 2000 suite. What we have identified as the training options will be, the bulk of it will be in-house training provided by our training partner. We will have training vouchers for classroom training and online web-based classes, and also online tutorials. When we rolled out, when we transitioned from WordPerfect to Office 2000 many years ago, we had in-house training, which was extremely successful. And again, we do want to encourage all staff to attend some type of training because the changes from our current version and the latest version, Office 2013, are, are pretty vast, and training will be required to ease that transition into the new programs and the new menu structures. On April 2nd of this year, a bid package was prepared by finance, and we delivered that bid package to Microsoft. And Microsoft, on the city's behalf, distributed that bid packet to their partners that were authorized to sell on the California State Select Agreement. And when we opened the bids on April 12th for bids, Endpoint Technologies provided the most responsive bid in the amount of $37,395. So this project is part of the Technology Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year 2012, 2013, and it's staff's strong recommendation, recommendation that you, the City Council, authorize the purchase of Microsoft Office 2013 licensing from Endpoint Technologies in the amount of $37,395.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'll ask any questions.
No.
No?
To the chair.
Michael?
I do have one question. In terms of the pricing we get on the licenses for this, what, what's the structure of the license, and do we participate in any larger pool that allows us a larger discount from Microsoft?
Well, the licensing structure that we're a part of is a California State Select Agreement, and that's why there are only a handful of authorized resellers from Microsoft. So we're pretty much bound by that structure, by that agreement by the state of California and Microsoft.
Okay. And so that agreement says that the state of California gets the lowest price, and I've seen similar agreements with other, with other vendors, not specifically Microsoft, but usually the agreement I see is that the state of California will get the lowest price of any customer, and if some other customer gets a better deal, then the state is automatically entitled to that same price? Is that kind of how it works?
That's how it works. You're correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
If there are no other questions, I would go ahead and accept Mr. Jackson's strong recommendation and go ahead and introduce a resolution for adoption.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Rubein?
Aye. We had number 11 already. We'll go right to comments from councilmembers. Anyone have anything? Okay. Item number, yeah, we do have a new fire chief. Mark? Come up to the podium, please. Welcome, as our, as our new chief. You've got a big smile on your face. You want to say a couple of words?
Well, I appreciate it. Honorable Mayor and Council, I am excited about it. I'm honored, I'm humbled. I look forward to serving you, the citizens, working with the city manager and the rest of staff to make the community that much more safe and, and just support it, and we look forward to being out in the community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome once again. Congratulations.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Item number 13, we will be going into closed session. We have two items. First is a conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency designated representative is the city manager and human resources director and employee organization is the public safety mid-management bargaining unit. And the second closed session is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2, one case. And before we adjourn, I would like to ask that you join me in a moment of silence in, in memory of the people in Boston that lost their lives, and also the people in Boston that were hurt in terrible, terrible tragedy last week. Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.